Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. On behalf of the members of the School Board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We do have one member of the School Board who wishes to participate in our business meeting electronically. As indicated in Board Policy, BEE, electronic participation in meetings from remote location, the Board Member must make such request, cite the reason for remote attendance, and the Board must approve the request by majority vote of the members present. School Board Member Rebecca Amon has made such a request. Ms. Amon, are you with us? Okay. She's not online, okay. If she becomes online, we will pause. Tonight is somber for us in Newport News Public Schools. We lost one of our finest. Ms. Michelle Price, our Director of Communications, left us on Thursday evening. This boardroom is not the same today. I felt it the moment I looked over at Devon. Yes, you did a fine job counting me down. But for as long as I've been Chair, as long as Mr. Brown was Chair, as long as Mr. Hunter was Chair, that's who we look to, to guide us in this space and to help us communicate who Newport News Public Schools really is. She will continue to be part of our fabric, part of who we are. We've learned so much from her professional and the way she lived her life. We think that, we are very thankful that we had her in our presence. So if we could just have a moment of silence to honor Michelle Price. Okay, we will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from B.C. Charles Elementary. We have Carter Murphy and Alexander Ethan. First, Carter will come forward and deliver the invocation, and he will be followed by Alexander, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. So Carter, would you come tell us a little bit about yourself?
I played basketball, and I played football before, and soccer. My favorite sport is basketball, and I'm 10 years old.
Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, my name is Carter Murray, I 10, B.C. Charles Elementary School. I am in the 4th grade and a straight A Honorable Student. I am kind, I am courageous, amazing, friendly, strong, encouraging, grateful, uplifting, funny, silly, playful, artistic, smart, and athletic, and I believe in myself. I also believe in others. I think it is important to be helpful and give grace to people because it is the right thing to do. You can't get mad or down on someone or make them feel bad if they mess up one time because no one is perfect. In my church, February is Value Month, I value myself and others. In my school, February is Kindness Month, I remember being a kind person ever since I was three years old. In America, February is Black History Month, I'm a young black man, I am Black History, I'm American history. My hope for you today is that you don't judge a book by its cover, don't judge a person before you get to know them. They're probably a good person, just need someone to talk to. Thank you for having me.
For joining us, Carter. Alexander, would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself?
I play baseball, football, basketball, and soccer, and my favorite sport is baseball. I go to B.C. Charles, and I'm in 2nd grade.
Awesome. Would you lead us through the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Carter and Alexander, thank you so much for participating in tonight's meeting. You both did such a wonderful job. You're welcome to come back anytime you want to. Supporting Carter and Alexander tonight are their family members and their school families. Please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much, the Board really does appreciate, appreciates the encouragement you've given your students, your children, and we thank you for bringing them to tonight's meeting. It reminds us what we're here for, thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda, our School Board Recognitions. So Dr. Mitchell, if you would, join me at the podium.
It's going to be hard to top Carter and Alexander's performance tonight. You really did a great job, thank you for being here. But we have a really great group of people to honor and recognize tonight, and I'm pleased to have the honor of introducing this evening's School Board Recognitions and Honorees. This week is Virginia School Boards Association School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and the School Board would like to take a few moments to acknowledge the dedication of our School Board Clerk, Ms. Tiffany Moore Buffalo. Ms. Moore Buffalo, would you please come forward?
Yes. Each, each February, the Virginia School Boards Association designates School Board Clerk Appreciation Week to recognize and acknowledge the work and assistance that School Board Clerks provide to School Board Members, Superintendents, and the school community at large. School Board Clerks are responsible for keeping records of meetings, documenting official proceedings, preparing and posting meeting agendas, organizing meeting schedules, and providing administrative support among a whole host of other duties. To sum it up, Ms. Moore Buffalo is a vital member of the smooth-running operation of our School Board team, and she's also multi-talented. She's the Chair of the Nova York School Board herself. So Ms. Moore Buffalo, on behalf of the School Board, Administration, and this community, thank you for your dedicated service. And we're going to get a picture now?
Yes.
Okay.
Auntie Gordon?
Just like you.
Don't hold him in front of you.
Is he Dr. Mitchell over there?
Tonight, I'm going to wait for Ms. Moore Buffalo to get back up there so she can document this. Well, thank you. And tonight, I also have the pleasure of acknowledging the dedicated members of the Newport News School Board. February is School Board Appreciation Month in Virginia. This observance was established by the Virginia School Boards Association in 1989 to encourage public recognition of the roles and responsibilities of School Board Members and to highlight the importance of their, of public education. This year, as in previous year, the Governor issued a proclamation officially recognizing February as School Board Appreciation Month, and locally-elected School Board Members play an important role in our representative democracy as the decisions of local School Boards directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools. As constitutional officers, Newport News School Board Members are responsible for setting educational policies, employing School Board Personnel, providing buildings and equipment, operating a transportation system, and dispersing school funds, among many, many, many other duties. Their job's not an easy one, but our School Board is committed to serving our community and ensuring that students are given every opportunity to excel through education. And so tonight, we express appreciation for our School Board Members, and I'm going to ask each of them to come down to accept certificates of honor from Newport News Public Schools, the Virginia School Boards Association, and a small token of appreciation in recognition of their commitment and service. So I'd like to first call forth, and she's already down here, Chairman Lisa Searls-Locke. Congratulations. Vice Chair, Dr. Terry Best. Board Member Rebecca Amon, if she's joining us virtually, let's give her a round of applause Board Member Douglas Brown. And our student representative of the School Board, Razben Verdi. So please join me in just one more time saluting all the members of the Newport News School Thank you very much, congratulations, for all that you do. Oh, yes, we'll do a picture first. So for an educator, receiving a national certification is really a symbol of excellence in teaching and professional growth. Newport News Public Schools is pleased to announce that five educators recently met the standards for national certification established by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. That's a mouthful. These educators will not only strengthen their profession, but increase academic achievement and rigor in the classroom. Please join me in congratulating our 2025 National Board Certified Teachers. Our first is Gretchen DeWolfe, please come forward. Yes, stay up here. Ms. DeWolfe is a science educator at Warwick High School, and she received her certification in science, adolescence, and young adulthood. Congratulations, thank you. Our next Honoree is Sarah Olson, please come up. Ms. Olson is an instructional coach of dual-language immersion in the Department of Teaching and Learning. She earned certification in literacy, reading, language arts, early and middle childhood. Our third Honoree tonight is Nancy Peterson, please come forward. Ms. Peterson is a professional school counselor at B.C. Charles Elementary School, and she received her certification in school counseling, early childhood through young adulthood. And our last Honoree for the night is Tracy Skinner. Oh, we have one more after that. Ms. Skinner is an English as a Second Language educator at McIntosh Elementary School. She received her certification in English as a new language, early and middle childhood. So congratulations again. And last, but certainly not least, Katherine Nicole Pyleland. Ms. Pyleland is an art educator at Sanford Elementary School, and she earned certification in art, early and middle childhood. So again, congratulations. So national School Board certification is the highest credential in the, in the teaching profession, so you have an awful lot to be proud of. The certification process usually takes between one and three years to finish. It's not an easy thing to get. These educators successfully completed the assessment process by preparing a portfolio of good teaching practices, student work, and multimedia examples. A reflective written component looks at teaching goals, methods, and results. Candidates also have to pass an extensive series of rigorous written exercises. So we are very proud of you for this honor and for all the work that you put into it. At this time, we would like to recognize the support behind the scenes, people who helped make this recognition possible, and would the family members of these educators please stand? Did you have the support? Thank you, and I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of their principals and supervisors. If you'll all stand when I call your name, Tiffany Thompson at Warwick High School. Dr. Angela Rett from Teaching and Learning. Okay, there she is. Orielle Robinson Taylor at B.C. Charles Elementary. Dr. Edward Van Dyke. And Kamisha Davis at McIntosh Elementary School. And finally, I would also like to publicly acknowledge and thank Wade Woolley, teacher-coach in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Thank you, and thank you all very much, and congratulations on this fantastic achievement. And we'll get a picture now. A lot to be thankful for tonight, just thank you. Ensuring that people, young people, are financially literate is paramount to preparing them for future financial success. Our next recognition showcases the school division's continued success in this area. Working, working in support of education, or WISE as the acronym goes, is an educational organization dedicated to building financial literacy and preparing students for college and the global workforce. The organization's financial literacy program provides high school students with financial education and the opportunity to become certified financially literate by successfully passing the WISE Financial Literacy Certification Test. Tonight, we're recognizing four career and technical education teachers who have been named WISE Gold Star Teachers for 2023-24. They are so named because at least 93% of the students in at least one of their classes successfully passed the WISE Financial Literacy Test. And we have some of them present this evening for us to recognize for their great work. So please join me in congratulating, from Denby High School, Hope Landon. Ms. Landon?
Hope, we're going to do that over again, it's Ms... Please join us in congratulating from Denby High School, Hope London. Ms. London, please.
I, I think I need some literacy help myself, so. Also from Denby High School, Lisa McAllister, who could not be here with us tonight. Please give her a round of applause. From Warwick High School, Kimberly Grant. And also from Warwick, Reginald Neely, who also, I believe, could not be here tonight, but again, let's please give him a warm applause. Most of these ladies and gentlemen have won this award multiple times, and we want to thank you for your continued dedication to working hard so that every, every group of students coming through our schools is certified financially literate. Congratulations. Well, at this time, we're going to take about a seven-minute break so that our presenters and guests and their families may leave if they wish to do so, but you're also welcome to stay. During the break, our viewing audience will have the opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes, thank you very much.
Newport News Public Schools students were invited to showcase their musical talents on a world-class stage. For the second year, the Newport News Visual and Performing Arts Department hosted the All-City Music Festival at Christopher Newport University's Ferguson Center for the Arts. Over 600 elementary, middle, and high school students were selected to perform. The event was open and free to families, school staff, and the public, thanks to a support grant provided by the Newport News Education Foundation and the Newport News Arts Commission. In the intimate setting of the Peebles Theater, the middle school vocal ensemble, orchestra, and band performed several songs. While in the awe-inspiring Diamondstein Theater, each elementary school was represented by the All-City Elementary Vocal Ensemble, and high school students showcased their talents in choir, guitar, orchestra, and band. All eight ensembles were led by guest conductors, which included music educators, administrators, musicians, and composers from different parts of Virginia, including two local educators with Newport News Public Schools. Supervisor of NNP's Visual and Performing Arts, Katie Sheehan Smith thanked each composer for using their time and talents to teach and challenge our young musicians. She also recognized the focused efforts of the dedicated music teachers across Newport News Public Schools, who do an amazing job every day instilling a passion and love for the arts in our students. Elected officials were invited to Warwick High School to learn firsthand how the city and state can best support our scholars and educators. During the annual Take Care Legislative to School Day, elected officials toured the impressive learning facilities at Warwick's Governor's Health Sciences Academy. But before the intensive tour, guests witnessed the signing of a formal partnership between Riverside College of Health Sciences and Newport News Public Schools. Through this partnership, Riverside will expand their support of the 400 high school students enrolled in the Health Sciences Academy's rigorous academic curriculum. To help address the shortage of professionals in the growing healthcare fields, Riverside will offer meaningful clinical experiences, guest lecturers, and invite Warwick students to visit Riverside's multiple high-tech simulated patient care labs. Graduates of the Governor's Health Sciences Academy will even receive preferred admissions into Riverside College of Health Sciences undergraduate programs. During the tour, legislators spoke directly with students as they offered a fun, hands-on exploration of their classrooms, labs, and clinical settings. Students were excited to show what they've learned in their medical classes and to share their hopes and dreams for further schooling and career ambitions. This interaction between students, educators, and legislators will hopefully develop closer relationships between our schools, local businesses, and elected officials to provide the best possible education for all of our students. 5th grade students from each Newport News Elementary School were laser-focused on completing their mission. In December, student teams were invited to Newsome Park Elementary, home of the Math, Science, and Technology Magnet Program, to compete in an engineering design challenge. To qualify for this challenge, each elementary school held a qualifying event in late November involving SciPACs. Normally, SciPACs are free take-home science and engineering kits that guarantee a fun learning experience for the whole family. But this time, every 5th grade class took time right before Thanksgiving to engineer and test their own wind-powered car in their classrooms. The students who completed the build accurately and whose car traveled the farthest were selected to the four-person team to represent their school. On the day of the citywide engineering competition, the students were presented with the Maze Craze themed challenge. Taking on the role of optical engineers, the students worked collaboratively to design and construct a maze to precisely direct a laser beam to a specific target. This engaging challenge encouraged students to use problem-solving, critical thinking, and STEM skills to explore real-world careers. Jefferson Lab partnered with the NNP's STEM Team to host the challenge, lending their expertise when students needed answers to tough questions. When time was up, Greenwood and Saunders tied for 3rd place, and Achievable Dream Academy earned 2nd place, and Knollwood Meadows Young Engineers were the top winners. Educators in Newport News Public Schools will benefit greatly from a generous $0.5 million grant. Bayport Credit Union, Ferguson Enterprises, Newport News Shipbuilding, and Virginia Natural Gas awarded a three-year, $500,000 grant to the Newport News Education Foundation. The Education Foundation partners closely with Newport News Public Schools by creating business and community partnerships to enrich teaching and learning opportunities for students. At a surprise announcement at Watkins Early Childhood Center, the four partnering businesses presented the Accelerating Change Together Grant to the Foundation's Board and Members. Celebrating this transformational grant were Newport News Mayor Philip Jones, NNP's Superintendent Dr. Michelle Mitchell, as well as school and city leaders and elected officials. Coincidentally, the presentation took place during a New Teacher Institute meeting, which is the exact initiative this new grant will support, ensuring our newest educators receive the training. ensuring our newest educators receive the training, supports, and skills needed to elevate their classroom experiences. Students in Newport News Public Schools are learning how to save lives. Through the American Heart Association Hampton Roads, Huntington Ingalls Industries and its Newport News Shipbuilding Division sponsored the gifting of thirteen CPR in-schools training kits to NNPS middle and high schools. These kits will be used in health and physical education courses to teach students the life-saving skills of CPR, using an AED, and providing additional first-aid resources. The presentation took place on World Restart a Heart Day, a global initiative to increase awareness about the importance of knowing how to properly administer CPR. Students from Warwick High School's Health Sciences Academy gladly accepted an invitation to participate in a demonstration of how the reusable, hands-on training kits can effectively prepare students to react quickly and knowledgeably in case of a cardiac emergency. By training our students to be confident with the preventative and preparedness skills to save a bystander's life, a person's chance of survival increases dramatically.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. And during our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the School Board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to thirty minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals you have thirty seconds remaining, and a red light and a beep indicates your time is up. In just a moment, I will call your names, so please come forward. So we have two housekeeping things we'd like to do. Let's go ahead and get Rebecca Aiman officially into our meeting. So, as I mentioned earlier, as indicated in Board Policy BEE, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, the board member must make such requests. Cite the reason for the remote attendance, and the board must approve the request by majority vote of the members present. School Board Rebecca Aiman has made such a request. Ms. Aiman, are you with us?
I am now. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful. And your request for the--
Um, yes. Yes, Madam Chairwoman, I would like to request to be able to attend remotely due to a back injury.
We are sorry to hear, appreciate your dedication and diligence to the division. Do I have a, a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we allow Ms. Aiman to participate in the meeting remotely.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Please call the roll.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Searl Slaw.
Four.
Motion passes six-zero. Thank you so much. So Ms. Aiman, you're still able to hear, correct?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. The other housekeeping task that I'd like to include, whenever we have a previous board member in our midst, we like to make sure that they are recognized as they served in this space. So Mr. Carlton Ashby is joining us this evening. He is here supporting some of our students who shared with us earlier and got some recognition. So welcome, Mr. Ashby. Reverend Natalie Chamberlain, and then thereafter Jackie Batterson.
Good evening, members of the School Board. I am honored as always to be here. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain. My pronouns are she and her. I'm part of a broad coalition of citizens who have been attending these meetings for the past must be almost sixteen months now. We support equality and the respectful treatment of all children, including trans and other LGBTQIA+ youth. I know that all of you are well aware of the political turmoil that's going on around our country. What you may not realize is how close to home this turmoil hits our LGBTQIA+ community, especially the trans community. Several of the anti-trans actions are making their way through the courts, but the federal government has basically erased trans people. Now, some of you don't care about that, but I know some of you do. There are no federal protections left for making sure that the hundred or so trans students under your care are protected. Trans folks across this country are scared because they know that they are not valued by the majority of the population. The incidence of suicide and attempted suicide has risen drastically, including in Newport News, in one of our high schools, because with this new administration has deemed these people are dispensable. You have a chance to protect the students in your care by some simple rewarding of a policy. The edits are already in your possession. If you won't help, who will?
Jackie Batterson.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My name is Jackie Batterson. As you're well aware, I've been here many times, and I am a resident of Newport News. I would first like to thank the Chairwoman for co-signing the letter from Mayor Philip Jones regarding the status of the immigrants in Newport News. Tonight, I am expressing my concern both for our transgender children and for our immigrant children. As I mentioned at the last meeting, you do not sit in those seats because you were appointed by the governor or anyone in Washington. You were elected by the voters of this city. This city, which along with the Commonwealth of Virginia, did not vote for what is happening in Washington. I have asked you repeatedly to be brave and recognize our transgender children for the people they are. Just because a president signs his name on a piece of paper does not make any group of people nonexistent, be they transgender or immigrants. There may be people here tonight who think that they need not care about transgender kids because they themselves are not transgender, or about the immigration status of others because their status as immigrants was long ago. Transgender children and immigrant children must enjoy the same freedoms as everyone else in Newport News without fear of discrimination. We have to be honest, stand up, and tell the truth. As Leo Tolstoy said, "Wrong does not cease to be wrong because the majority share in it." I won't pretend that I could ever possibly understand what it must feel like to be born in a body that you know doesn't belong to who you really are. But I do understand exactly what it feels like to be hated for nothing more than what I think and feel, and I will always be on their side. Thank you.
Bridging the Gap Youth Program, I'm not sure who this representative is by name. And then Gabriel Marquez, after, after such.
Good evening, members of the School Board. How are you all this morning?
And your name?
Tamara Wills. I'm the founder of Bridging the Gap Youth Program.
Thank you.
And I'm not here to battle, I'm here to bridge, here to fight against violence that's going on in our communities with our, with our youth. Good evening, members of the School Board, community leaders, parents, and students. My name is Tamara Wills, and I stand here before you not to battle, but to bridge, because our youth need more than debates and discussions. They need action. We had the opportunity to visit Woodside High School, a group called Flourish, in December. And we also want to sponsor a DJ named G. Hicks that is already working in your schools to bridge more opportunity for the community leaders like him, so they have more resources to utilize. BTGYP is even in Paramount, California, right now with Bridging, with the BTG Classroom Connection, supporting a set of fourth graders because they are welcoming to the support from community leaders. We call on our community to join us tonight because what we've been hearing from parents and young people firsthand through our Your Vote Matters event, we were overwhelmed by the number of parents and students who feel lost in this system, who don't know how to advocate for real change, education, and opportunities, and access to tools that they need to succeed. What we did was is promoted that we were coming to the School Board today. We promoted it on social media and other places because we realized that parents don't even know where to come to even talk about some of the issues that they may have going on with their students. One major example is a recording studio that's in Brooks Crossing Innovation Lab, a space that Bridging the Gap Youth Program requested and helped develop the first year as a part of the innovative initiative concerning music and STEM. We know that music schematics aligns with shipbuilding schematics, yet GED students are not even given access to that technology, and they're in the same building with that technology. Especially when we have two-point-four million unfilled STEM and innovation jobs waiting for skilled workers. Why aren't we equipping them with the tools they need to build their future? For over thirteen years, Bridging the Gap Youth, Youth Program has worked to clean up the message in music with DJ Jacque Spade from 103 Jams, recognizing how much music influences our youth. But beyond that, we need real structure, real opportunities, and things that will empower our youth that they want to connect with. It's meeting them where they are. I was able to speak to a parent before I came here, and one of the things that she requested was-- oh, I'm at my thing, at the end. Well, she requested more innovational things, like gaming opportunities, AI technology, and things like that. And what we want to say to you all is, we're here presenting ourselves because we do want to go into the schools in the future, and I just wanted to say how much we enjoy working with the Newport News City Schools. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Here comes Gabriel.
Yes, good evening to the Board and the Honorable Chair, Ms. Searl Slaw. My name is Gabriel Marquez, though I am sure you all know me at this point. I like to think that we've become acquainted after more than a year. I'm once again speaking on behalf of the Ty Water Chapter of the DSA, of which I am a co-chair. I'm here once more to speak on the issue of human and worker rights. It has been more than a year, and the public has not heard any progress on the deliberations for Policy JB and Procedure JBP. Many in the community remain concerned, and I ask that the Board please prioritize addressing these collective concerns. The current political climate has enabled attacks on the rights of minorities. They've become more prevalent. And if the School Board is unable to act to protect trans students who make up a, you know, important but a small minority, I fear for its ability to protect other marginalized groups. I pray I won't be back here one day to ask that the Board bring back recognition of Black History Month and Mental Health Services, but these are uncertain times. I also ask that the Board listen to the demands of the NNEA, particularly the bus drivers who have been speaking for months about their working conditions, which are intolerable, and please support their push for collective bargaining. The workers here present tonight are the backbone of our society and do some of the most important work that I can think of. They're not having these rights already is a reminder of our society's hostility to labor, as well as the legacy of Jim Crow in the South. They deserve to have their voices heard and their needs addressed. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Have a good evening.
David Brackman, and then Mary Boss.
Good evening. David Brackman. He, him demanded changes to Procedure JBP. Now that the White House inaugurated itself with the same salute as the Nazis, who knows what they meant by that, I hope you all can anticipate being asked to do more of the escalating delegitimization, isolation, and erasure of groups deemed an affront to God and/or country. And I hope you can prepare to say no to it. To everyone who would like to do something but can't because Yonkin threatened to sue us for Richneck, let me be clear, it is not our kid's job to take the fall for you or any administrator. It's just us. Try being sued for doing something good. It builds character. It's not a coincidence that the heroes of the civil rights and women's suffrage movements were convicted criminals or targets of law enforcement. The current situation is a big part of what history books are for, which is why they're under attack across the country, particularly to the Board's new member, Ms. Harris, whose pole greeters promised teaching, quote, "true history and wrong from right." I want to note historical truth I wasn't taught here. Magnus Hirschfeld's Institute for Sexual Science, which performed gender-affirming surgeries, was burned by the Nazis on May sixth, nineteen thirty-three, before the larger and more famous book burnings on May tenth. Gay men and trans women were treated as the same group, ultimately identified with the pink triangle, and were a majority of the concentration camp population in early nineteen thirty-five. When first they came for, this is who they came for, so I'm asking you to do the right thing and motion to reverse most of the November twenty-twenty-three changes to Procedure JBP. Instead, to the Board and to the Superintendent's Office, instead of trying to make the perfect comprehensive revision on some ever-receding future date, take one step by today, striking from Section three G two, the phrase, quote, "that promote the child's privacy and safety," end quote. Trans people using gender-affirming restrooms, as they have for years in this and other states, introduces no risks to others. Privacy and safety are not why you're allowing people to opt out of being in the same restroom that a trans person once was. Continue to allow the opt-outs for now, if you must, but stop repeating the false propagandized justification and put the actual one, if you like, quote, "that promote the election of MAGA candidates," and hopefully avoid accountability for failing to protect teachers from gun violence, end quote. Thanks.
Mary Boss. And next we'll have Joyce Blow and Vivian Reynolds.
Hello, good evening. Mary Boss, an NPS teacher, parent, and graduate.
Uh hello, good evening. Uh Mary Boss, an NPS teacher, parent and graduate and proud secretary of the Newport News Education Association. Um first of all, I want to say condolences um to the board on the passing of Ms. Michelle Price. Um I remember as a student in an NPS uh twenty-five years ago. It was her voice on all the announcements and it was her voice on the snow days. So. Um this is definitely the end of an era for sure and my condolences to everyone. Uh the NNEA continues our campaign for contract negotiations, also known as collective bargaining rights. To give NPS teachers and staff a seat at the table to negotiate for stronger contracts. Districts with contract negotiations have achieved improved working conditions that benefit both students and school workers. Such as smaller class sizes, more planning time, increased health and safety measures and more. We now have four employee groups that have majorities of authorization cards signed. Transportation, custodians, plant services and security, with nurses and teachers approaching majorities quickly as well. And NPS employees, both union and non-union, can visit NewportNewsEducationAssociation.com and scroll down to Authorization Cards. For information on how to sign and support. Uh in the current political climate, it is more important than ever that NPS leaders respect and protect vulnerable students as much as possible. Including gay, gender con, non-conforming and trans students who sadly must contend with cruel and cowardly politicians. Who attacked them children for cheap political points. Please stand up for these vulnerable children and teens by striving for the most nondiscriminatories, uh nondiscriminatory policies possible. Um such as the changes to policies um that were recommended by other speakers tonight. Uh standing up for vulnerable students also means standing up for immigrant and migrant children in NPS. I'd like to say a big thank you to School Board Chair Lisa Searlslaw and to Mayor Philip Jones. For releasing a joint statement that affirms their commitment to protection of all residents regardless of immigration status. Um thank you, and this is a great first step. I'd like to encourage the board um to take a step further and consider the National Education Association Safe Zone Schools Resolution and Model Policy. Which would enshrine protections for immigrant students into policies and procedures. And would create a mechanism for informing families and community members about the policy. To quote the NEA, it is the right of every child, regardless of immigration status. To access a free public K-12 education. When federal immigration authorities aggressively pursue enforcement activities on or around school property and transportation routes. It harmily, it harmfully disrupts the learning environment and significantly interferes with the ability of all students to access a free public K-12 education. NEA has developed a sample resolution and district policy to help local school districts create their own safe, uh safe zones resolutions. The language, language is closely tied to the Supreme Court case Plyler versus Doe, which is the foundational precedent. I will send the board um information on NEA Safe Zone Schools and a sample resolution and district policy. Thank you so much for your time.
Joyce Blow.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Joyce Blow. I am a bus driver. I've been driving for twenty years. Um I'm gonna give you a bit of information. Without bus drivers, students would not get to school. Without teachers, student would, students would not be taught. Without cafeteria workers, students would not be having lunch. Without custodians, students would not have a sanitized school, would not have a sanitized school. Without security, they would not be safe. So without all these components and groups. The school would not function, but therefore these particular people in the school system are being disrespected. And not getting what they need for as a bonus. Higher pay and raises. There is a high volume of callouts on drivers. Some days it's a hundred drivers that are called out. Drivers are doing double and triple runs. When they are constantly called to do double and triple runs, the next day they will call out. Therefore, they are tired and they are not coming back for a couple of days. So the pattern keeps on and on and on. And instead of fixing the problem. And figuring out why drivers, drivers are calling out and resolving the issue. The pattern is just gonna keep going on and soon you're gonna have a lot of kids that know drivers. Spraying perfume on buses with drivers that have allergies and asthma. Asthmatic and allergic reactions are gonna happen. Instead of but, um buses being in houses, they're gonna be in stores and in ditches. When a driver has an allergic reaction or asthmatic attack. After constantly telling a child not to spray perfume or any kind of body spray on the bus. So some kind of rule or policy need to be set in place with that. What is a referral? I have no idea what that is, cuz when you write a referral, they tell you you have to constantly keep writing a referral. In order for something to happen, which nothing is gonna happen cuz the child is still put back on the bus. With no accountability, doing the same thing. What is seniority? When another driver who just walks through the door. Can get whatever they want and a driver that's been here for thirty-five or thirty years, get looked the other way. Stop putting drivers who have health issues on old buses that are mildewed and smelly. That's asking for asthma attack. I'll see you next month.
Vivian Reynolds and then Reverend Burnett. Michael Burnett.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board Members. My name is Vivian Moberg Reynolds. I'm a product of Newport News Public Schools, starting with Hilton all the way up to Old Warwick High School and with the Warwick Farmers. I have over thirty-three plus years of teaching. I'm retired. But with all the climate that we live in now, our public schools are of the most important essence. We need to provide a good, solid public education for all children in our community. And this business of providing money to private charter schools needs to be overlooked and to be stopped. Because we need to put our, our money and put our, everything that we have into making our public schools work. And as the ladies have said tonight, the first and foremost thing, we think about our children who come to these schools. And we are grateful and thankful to the teachers, all the honors we've heard tonight. It's a lot of work to be a school teacher. It's a lot of work to have a lot of children in your classroom. And I think they need to be valued. And what we've just heard from the lady who talked about the other members. The cafeteria workers, the nurses, the bus drivers, the custodians. I probably left somebody out. All those people do need to be valued. So we need to look at our resources that we have to make sure that we can hold on to the people that support them. And again, I come to you as I did once before about these LGBTQ trans children. Once again, they are human beings and they are who they are. They're not going to hurt anyone, but people hurt them. And we've got to try and stop this. I'm so sick of hearing people say it's disparaging to say DEI, diversity, equality, inclusion. I said, well, why don't we try democracy, education and integrity? But it's very alarming to me that we are attacking public schools, doing away with the Department of Education. What are people in poor districts going to do? So I applaud what you do, hang in there, look out for our students and the children in the city of Newport News. And value the people who work every day for you. Thank you.
Reverend Michael Burnett.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and Dr. Mitchell. First, I want to commend, I suppose the board as a whole, but especially. Madam Chair Searlslaw for your joint declaration along with Mayor Jones. Uh regarding our immigrant students. I think. Standing up for a school being a safe place for children. Safeguarding the progress of our youth. Even in the face of orders from our governor and from the White House. I think that shows courage. I think that shows integrity. I think it shows leadership that is unafraid to set aside. Culture war nonsense and political theater for the sake of the students in your care. And at the risk of echoing what's been said so much already tonight. I hope this board can muster that same courage and integrity in leadership. When it comes time to revise Procedure JBP. And I hope that time can be sooner rather than later. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for your comments and time coming out this evening to share your thoughts. We'll move on to section three, the consent agenda, which includes three point zero one. Minutes from the work session, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Three point zero two minutes from the regular meeting, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The financial reports, including the revenue and expense reports for January and February twenty twenty-five. The child nutrition reports, three point zero four, the personnel report, three point zero five, budget transfer. Three point zero six, the easement for Denby High School. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Searlslaw.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to section action items, four point zero one, revised policies. Uh Dr. Mitchell.
Yes, we have some revised policies that had previously been presented to you by Ms. Tracy Brooks. And at this time, um we'd like to have action taken on those revised policies.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion for our new and revised policy, starting with policies. Um related to parental engagement? Is that our first one?
Yes.
Okay.
No, it's JAF. It's right above it.
Oh, Jay, uh I'll start with that one. JF, which focuses on student admissions to school. Sort of a motion for that one?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve policies related to parental engagement. And that includes policy.
Doctor Best.
Actually.
It's just number one, JF.
Looks like number one is our.
School.
I'm sorry.
JF.
JF, student admissions to school.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Searlslaw.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Now do I have a motion for policies related to parental engagement?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I move to approve policies related to parental engagement to include. KA, school home community relations. KB, parent involvement in education. KBA, every student succeeds act, parent involvement for Title One schools and English language learner, learners programs. KBE, relations with parent organizations. KCB, community involvement in decision-making and KDA, concerns and complaints.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion?
Uh Madam Chair, I just wanted to say uh on all of these policies uh that were uh being presented tonight. I want to thank the superintendent and Ms. Brooks and the entire team, the policy committee for um all the work that has gone into them. And uh for listening to the various revisions uh that are offered up and uh listening to my comments. So uh because I feel like, you know, my comments uh were very well reflected in the revisions. I'm, you know, feel very comfortable with these policies tonight. So as you can say, a clock is right twice a day. Right? So you mark the, mark the date and the time. I don't have any problems with the policies. Uh this evening, whereas normally I'm, I'm pretty boisterous about the uh, the policies. So. Um you don't have to break any more of them up on my account cuz I'm, I'm good with them.
Well, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Brown. And I, and I do appreciate your continued confidence that we can get this right. Uh and I, I do echo Mr. Brown's thanks to our policy um committees, committee members. It, it takes a lot to get this. Sounds like we're just reading a bunch of policies, but it took a lot to get here. All right, any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Searlslaw.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Great. So the customary uh way that we do divide our policies up, I actually kind of like it. Because it lets the um, the public see that they're kind, they are in batches. So we'll continue with our batching. It's only two more this evening. So policies related to media relations.
Uh Madam Chair, I move that we approve policies related to media relations, which include. KD, public information and communications. KDC, school-sponsored information media. KDD, media relations. KDE, crisis management slash communications. And KE, judicial review of board decisions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Searlslaw.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. And finally, policies related to activities in schools. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve policies related to activities in schools. Which include KCD, public gift slash donations to schools. KFB, community use of school facilities. KG, business and industry involvement in education. KH, solicitation in schools. KHB, advertising in schools. KHE, political materials. KI, visitors to school. And KJ, relations with community organizations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Searlslaw.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now move on to four point zero two, personnel actions. Uh Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much. This evening, Madam Chair and School Board Members, I am recommending. Ms. Brandy Day as the Executive Director of Human Resources. Ms. Day has a Master of Education and Policy Planning and Leadership from William &amp; Mary. Ms. Day currently works as the Director of Human Resources Business Partner at William &amp; Mary. She has previously worked as the Chief Talent Officer at Williamsburg Landing. Director of Human Resources with Olive White County. And Supervisor of Human Resources with Williamsburg James City County Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendation for Brandy Day as the Executive Director of Human Resources.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Searlslaw.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We're now on section five, Reports and Information. Five point zero two, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed school calendar. Dr. Mitchell, did I, I feel like I skipped something. There it is. We will move to section five, Reports and Information. There it is, five point zero one. Human Resources Annual Report, which is very important. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, Dr. Nina Farish is going to come before us to provide the annual report. She will give you some updates on human resources. Um some positions, vacancies and a lot of other good stuff. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Farish.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Searlslaw, Vice Chair Dr. Best, Board Members and Dr. Mitchell. This evening, I am going to share the annual human resources. This evening, I am going to share the annual human resources update. The human resources initiatives come under our strategic goal, stewardship of resources. We strive to establish processes and procedures to recruit. Hire, reward, and retain highly effective staff. All directed toward helping our students become college, career, and citizen ready. Tonight, I will cover instructional and support staff vacancies, hiring trends, and staffing initiatives. Virginia's school divisions have been required to report the total number of full-time equivalent positions. In administration and instruction, and the number of unfilled positions for the last three years. The report is called Positions and Exits Collection, or P E C. The Virginia Department of Education collects data from school divisions regarding employment trends. Additionally, this reporting helps identify critical shortages by subject area, geographic region, or school division. The P E C is submitted in the fall and at the end of the school year. The fall submission reports all F T E, full-time equivalents, held by licensed and unlicensed personnel. The number of positions and the number of unfilled F T Es as of October first. The end of year P E C reports only full-time equivalent licensed positions. The number of unfilled positions on the last day of school. And the number of, that left employment with Newport News Public Schools between July first and June thirtieth. For the purposes of this report, the V D O E defines teachers. As personnel with direct responsibility for student instruction and learning. In previous presentations, you have seen the N N P S has historically had triple-digit teacher vacancies. Here you can see the teacher vacancy percent for the last three years. The areas of greatest vacancies are elementary, special education, math, and English. Now how does that compare to other re, uh, divisions in our same divi, uh, region? Sorry. We are Region Two, which consists of fifteen school divisions. This chart shows a comparison of the V D O E data for Region Two overall. And divisions of similar size to N N P S. This data is as of October first, two thousand twenty-three, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Here is the same data as the previous slide, however, with a three-year comparison. Of the N N P S and other Region Two divisions of similar size. Based on V D O E reporting, hirings after October first of each school year. Do not count toward vacancy rates. The October twenty twenty-four, twenty-five data has not been posted by V D O E. However, I have added what was submitted for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As of October first, teacher vacancy data. N N P S has several grow your own initiatives to help with teacher vacancies. We currently work with candidates that have their bachelor or master's degree and need to complete their licensure requirements. We also work with instructional assistants, substitutes, and career switcher candidates. Who want to become fully licensed teachers. We provide practicums, observation hours, and tuition reimbursement. Or paid internships and direct hires in various instructional positions. Our Emerging Teacher Program also includes I Teach. An alter, alternate V D O E approved route to licensure. I Teach is a non-college program accredited by the Council for Accreditation of Educator Preparation. Focused on offering aspiring educators an accessible and affordable route to full licensure. Currently, we have approximately one hundred teachers enrolled. Our Teacher Apprenticeship Program. Last year, we increased the Grow Our Own Programs, adding the Teacher Apprenticeship Program tab. This grant-funded program creates a pipeline for apprentices to earn a free bachelor's degree in two years. Become certified in hard-to-staff positions. And participate in a multi-year residency experience while being a full-time employed instructional assistant. Teacher apprentices commit to teaching in our division for three years after successfully completing the program. We partner with Averyt University, Mary Baldwin, and O D U. Student Teacher University. These future teachers learn from our very best teachers and engage with our students. Our practicum and student obs, observers will dedicate over five thousand hours in our classrooms by May. We continue to partner with C N U to host Student Teacher University. Offering future teachers the opportunity to learn about engaging diverse learners. Using instructional technology, implementing successful classroom management strategies. And building strong teacher-student relationships. We are proud to place one hundred percent of C N U's student teachers. We are excited to welcome thirty-seven Hampton University education majors. Into our schools for this practicum placements in elementary education. Music, biology, English, and math. This partnership provides an additional five hundred and twenty hours of student. Uh, support for our teachers and students. We also have a partnership with Norfolk State University for social workers completing their practicum hours with us. Teacher residency. This is our eighth year implementing, implementing our Teacher in Residency, T I R program. We partner with C N U and William &amp; Mary to provide scholarships for master's degree programs. And paid year-long internships. After completing the master's degree program and residency. T I Rs receive full licensure and are committed to teaching in N N P S for three years. Since two thousand seventeen, we have had a total of ninety teachers through the T I R program. We also hire teacher candidates from Virginia Teacher Preparation Programs. Such as O D U, William &amp; Mary, and C N U. A teacher candidate is a first-year provisionally licensed teacher. Who completes their master's degree program under the supervision and support of their university program. And N N P S New Teacher Program. After their first year of successful services and program completion, they receive full licensure. Support staff. We also have some hard-to-fill support staff vacancies. Here is a comparison of where we were when schools, excuse me, when schools started and current to date. We continue to recruit for all vacancies throughout the year. While we have made positive strides with many of these vacancies, we still have challenges with bus drivers and nurse vacancies. The bus driver challenge, I will also say in speaking to my counterparts, is not just specific to Newport News Public Schools. Recruitment initiatives include social media, radio, billboards, retiree solicitation. International recruitment, job fairs, walk-in interviews. On February first, we had an N N P S sponsored job fair. There were eighty-two instructional candidates in attendance. We gave twenty-eight offers on the spot. There were seventy-eight support staff candidates, and we gave fifty-one offers on the spot. Also, we have military partnerships with Hiring Our Heroes. A U S Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and Skills Bridge. They have a fellowship program. The program allows exiting military members an opportunity to work in a position related to their skills and talent. If the fellowship is a success for both the employer and exiting military member, a formal offer is given. We also partner with Troops to Teachers. We have participated in hiring events with the Veterans Employment Center, Joint Base Fort Eustis, and Langley Air Force Base. From July first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have hired nineteen veterans and thirty-one military spouses. Recruitment is a joint effort. I want to say thank you to not only the human resources staff, uh, family members. School leadership, principals, assistant principals. Staff from Departments of Teaching and Learning. And some of our teachers, substitute teachers, and interns have come out to our recruitment events to help us. At this time, this concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Where's, do you have questions at this time? Mister Brown.
I'll just make, uh, one comment going back to slide seven, because it, uh, we were talking about our budget earlier tonight. Uh, so on that, if we can go back to that slide on neighboring vacancy rates. And so just, I'm just pointing out, um, you know, point of emphasis. We can see the divisions that we saw that have the highest pay have the lowest vacancy. So, I'm just, I'm hammering home a, a point I was making earlier this evening that, uh, salary increases. Do make a long-term difference in your division and your vacancy rate, because we, the evidence is right there in front of us. Of, uh, we can see the divisions that have the highest pay, they've got the lowest down there. So, that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, and I would just like to say thank you, and it made me feel good to see that Norfolk State and Hampton University are on board. I think we need to take advantage of, of course, all of our local universities, but. There's a shortage of minority teachers, so that will fill that gap. So I was happy to see that in your report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you so much for your report. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna move on to five point zero two. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed school calendar. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tracy Brooks is coming forward to share with you the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six, um, school calendar. You know, Ms. Brooks comes before you every year. She works collaboratively with the surrounding districts as they work together. To try to come up with a, a calendar that would be, um, acceptable, I'll say. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Members of the Board, and Dr. Mitchell. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share highlights from the Division-wide calendar being proposed for next school year. But before I review the calendar, and for the sake of the viewing audience. I would like to speak briefly about the team that developed the draft calendar, the process we used. And the factors we considered in planning the calendar that is before you this evening. Now, the draft calendar is the work of the Calendar Committee. That consists of elementary and secondary teachers, administrators, parents, and representatives from our instructional areas. And our support services who provide a valuable input on the draft. And they will continue to work over the next several weeks to revise the calendar as needed. I would like to thank our committee members for their hard work. And striving to balance the various needs of our students, our staff, and families. And developing the calendar draft that I will be sharing with you this evening. Now, this slide shows our calendar planning process. Which began with meetings with the six school divisions on the peninsula last fall. We incorporated the recommendations along with the input we received from our own calendar committee to develop our draft. We've posted the draft on our school division's webpage for public feedback. And will continue to reach out to families and to our employee, student, and community advisory groups for their input. Through March, when the calendar will come back before the school board for approval. Now, there are several factors that we considered in planning the calendar. First and foremost is the instructional program. So we developed a calendar that will support our work in preparing our students to graduate college, career, and citizen ready. Excuse me. Then we base the calendar on the state requirement of a minimum of nine hundred and ninety instructional hours per year, which we exceed. Additionally, the state allows us to count up to ten inclement weather days as virtual learning days. Since we have a virtual learning plan in place, and we provide a device for every student. Now, once we had our student days in place, we added teacher workdays, planning days, and opportunities for professional development. For up to two hundred days for our teachers as required by the state code. And lastly, we worked within a two hundred and forty-five day contract. Or appointment period for our twelve-month employees. I'd like to pause here to speak more about our instructional hours. Because as committee members, we're often asked about ending the school year earlier. Since our school calendar exceeds the number of instructional hours required by the state. However, in calculating the instructional hours, we have to consider factors such as the number of hours. Factors other than the number of hours from the start of the school day to dismissal time. For example, we are required to subtract time for certain activities such as lunch periods, bathroom breaks, and time between classes. In addition, the instructional hours must occur within certain content areas. For high school primarily, we must have a hundred and forty instructional hours per credit-bearing course. Five hundred and sixty instructional hours for middle school core classes. And six hundred and eighty instructional hours for elementary core academic disciplines. With a proposed calendar containing a hundred and seventy-eight days. We come very close to the one hundred and forty instructional hours for our credit-bearing courses. You may also recall that we've had fewer than a hundred and eighty student days in our calendars for the past two years. To allow for two full planning days for our teachers. While continuing to maximize instructional time for our students. Now, as I mentioned earlier, our six peninsula school divisions work together to maintain many cons, as many consistent calendar dates as possible. For next school year, all six school divisions will open pre-Labor Day on Monday, August twenty-fifth. According to the drafts that our neighboring school divisions have shared with us thus far. Just as a reminder, under state law, school divisions that open prior to Labor Day. Must also close schools on the Friday before the holiday weekend. So our calendar proposal reflects that schedule as well. And while we have many requests to have schools closed for the entire week of Thanksgiving. All divisions will have schools in session on the Monday and Tuesday of that week. With schools closed on Wednesday, November twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. Next year, all peninsula school divisions will be observing a two-week winter break. From Monday, December twenty-second through Friday, January second of twenty twenty-six. And for spring break, all school divisions will continue to observe the break. As the first Monday through Friday in April, which will be April sixth through the tenth. Now, there were three calendar considerations at the forefront of the committee's work on next year's draft. And they were first, to maximize the time for students to receive high-quality instruction. So we maintain the number of student days at a hundred and seventy-eight days for next year. Second, we continue to include time for teachers to implement instruction throughout the year. And to take advantage of professional development opportunities. The draft calendar also maintained the fourteen pre-service and teacher workdays. At the beginning of the school year in August for our new teachers, and seven days for returning teachers. And third, we consider the impact of half-days on student attendance and our families. Since our data show that daily absences tended to peak on half-days. So as you know, attendance matters for instruction. So with the exception of high school exams, next year's calendar will contain only three half-days for all students. And now I would like to share highlights from the proposed calendar. Starting in August, our new teachers will report on Monday, the fourth. And returning teachers and teacher assistants will report on Thursday, August fourteenth. And as mentioned earlier, the first day for students would be Monday, August twenty-fifth. With schools closed on Friday, August twenty-ninth, in keeping with the state code. On October tenth, schools would be closed for students. While teachers will have a half-day for professional development in the morning, with family conferences in the afternoon. And then looking at November, the fourth is an election day for several state offices. And will be an e-commute teacher workday to close out the first marking period. And later in the month, schools will be closed on Wednesday through Friday, November twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving observance. With a half-day for twelve-month employees on the twenty-sixth to meet their contractual obligation. And as we enter twenty twenty-six, and based on the positive feedback we've received from teachers. We continue the teacher planning day for the day after the winter break ends, which will be on Monday, January fifth. With students reporting on January sixth. And at the end of the first semester, Monday, January twenty-sixth will be a teacher and support staff workday. And Tuesday, January twenty-seventh, will be a full day for professional development. Which is consistent with the other school divisions on the peninsula. And as I mentioned earlier. And as I mentioned earlier, spring break will continue to be observed as the first Monday through Friday in April, which will be April sixth through the tenth for all peninsula school divisions. And like this current year, we have designated a teacher planning day for the day after spring break ends, which will be on Monday, April thirteenth, with students returning on Tuesday, April fourteenth. And in closing out the year, the calendar schedules graduation ceremonies for Saturday and Sunday, June sixth and seventh. And next year, we will end the school year on Tuesday, June ninth, as the last day for students, and Wednesday, June tenth, as the last workday for teachers. Now, this is a visual representation of next year's calendar. It includes our grading period dates in the box in the lower left-hand corner, and to the right of it are the religious observances that occur during the school week, as well as symbols for our early dismissals, school closures, and other key dates. Now, for a next school year and over the past three years, our schools open on the fourth Monday in August. And looking ahead to the next two school years, two thousand twenty-six through the twenty-seventh and two thousand twenty-seven through twenty-eight, the Peninsula Calendar Committee noticed that the fourth week of August will result in an unintentional two-week school start prior to Labor Day. However, the August twenty-fourth date would continue to align with the start dates of our past three school years and would not reduce the number of weeks that students and teachers typically would be off during the summers of two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-seven. We also noticed that if schools started on Monday, August thirty-first, which is the fifth Monday in that month, then the school year would end around June sixteenth of two thousand twenty-seven for students and the June seventeenth for teachers, which is about a week later than we typically end. So the Peninsula Calendar Committee and our school division's Calendar Committee will continue to discuss potential start dates for the two thousand twenty-six school year so that any new proposed start dates would be shared with the School Board for your consideration and with the public a year ahead of time or as early as June of this year so that our students, staff, and parents may plan accordingly. So in terms of our next steps, we will continue to solicit feedback from the community on the proposed draft through a link to the calendar on our school and division webpages with the opportunity for viewers to ask questions or post suggestions. And based on that feedback, we will revise the calendar if needed. The final draft calendar will come before the School Board for action at your March eighteenth monthly meeting. And once approved, we will publicize the calendar through our school newsletters and our electronic communications such as newsbreak, newslines, and board briefs and on school websites and on the school division's webpage. And as we continue to work together with the other peninsula school divisions to propose start dates for the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we will keep the Board informed. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening, and I would be happy to respond to your questions or to note your suggestions. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Board members, do we have questions at this time? That must mean we'll have questions later.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your report. We're still in section five, five point zero three, the attendance report, five point zero four, membership report, and five point zero five, the construction report. Board members, you've received a copy of this report. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five point zero six, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to start my comments by acknowledging the contributions of Michelle Price. She was not only a beloved colleague, but also the voice and the heart of our school division. Her contributions to Newport News Public Schools were immeasurable. Her kindness, her professionalism, and deep love for this community made a lasting difference. We honor her legacy, and we extend our heartfelt condolences to her loved ones. I want to personally acknowledge and thank our dedicated School Board members for their work on behalf of public schools in our city. And I also want to thank our Board members, and I want you to know how much I appreciate your commitment and your support to students, families, staff, and our school division as a whole. To Ms. Moore Buffalo, thank you for all your dedicated service to the School Board and to our division and to me. The Virginia General Assembly recognized Newport News Public Schools youth development accomplishments and contributions to the community by passing a resolution commending its efforts at the state Capitol on February the twelfth. Delegate Chad Green introduced House Joint Resolution Number five-five-six and was joined by Delegate Marcia Price and Senator Danny Diggs as co-patrons. Green acknowledged the youth development staff, student representatives, and community partners in the gallery and asked them to stand as he summarized the resolution which passed by unanimous vote. So we are really proud of our youth development department. I'd like to recognize the importance of February as Career and Technical Education Month, and I want to thank all of our CTE educators. They lead more than seventy courses that prepare our students to earn industry certifications and marketable job skills. So we want to thank you for ensuring that our students are college, career, and citizen-ready. And once again, youth development, we want to acknowledge our youth developments department. They hosted the Fifth Annual RISE Male Empowerment Conference on February the eighth, and it was held at Heritage High School. More than four hundred students in grades six through twelve connected with nurturing adults throughout a day of interactive workshops, activities, special guest presentations on topics such as entrepreneurship, leadership, positive identity, managing emotions, and financial literacy. And we want to give a special thank you to Congressman Bobby Scott, Mayor Philip Jones, City Councilman John Ely, Board members, Dr. Terry Best, Ms. Rashina Harris, and the dozens of male mentors for their participation and support. And that's a great picture. Kelly, I don't know if you took that picture, but whoever took it, it's a great picture. Newport News Public Schools also raised more than seventeen thousand dollars for the United Way of the Virginia Peninsula's two thousand twenty-five campaign. And yes, those were student donations. The United Way supports local organizations that serve our community. Our student representatives from each school announced their school's fundraising total and presented checks to the United Way officials at a celebration which was held on February the sixth. So congratulations to our students for caring about others in their community. Just a quick reminder that Friday, March the seventh, is a half-day for students with family conferences in the afternoon. But I also want to remind our families that tomorrow will be a remote day. And at this time, this concludes my remarks for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and we do appreciate your steadfast dedication to our school division. So we'll move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. Are there any cards?
No, ma'am.
We will move then to matters by the School Board, and we'll start with Mr. Verde. Let's hear what is going on with our students.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope the second semester has gotten off to a great start for my fellow high school students. I would like to share that at our Superintendent Student Advisory Board meeting next week, representatives from the American Heart Association will be attending to discuss a student CPR awareness challenge among our six high schools. We also will be working with school attendance staff members on a student attendance campaign to improve chronic absenteeism in the school division. I hope everyone will stay safe and warm in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
No comment today.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
No comment tonight.
Ms. Alger?
I don't have any comments tonight.
Ms. Harris?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank everyone who comes out and gives comment and keeps us informed and letting your voice be heard. I just think it's an important piece. I also wanted to shout out the City of Newport News and all the School Board members and collaboratives who came out to the Winter Carnival for the re-up program to engage the community in giving out school supplies for the second semester. Myself and Councilman Harris collaborated on the event, and it was very well attended. It's something we look forward to, and it grows each and every year. So just wanted to thank the community for coming out and collaborating with that and all of the partners involved. Also wanted to thank Knollwood Elementary School, who invited me to their National Elementary Honor Society induction ceremony, which was totally amazing to see all the young people who took part in that. So thank you to Knollwood and also the RISE Conference. That was actually my first year attending, and my son also attended as an Ella Fitzgerald seventh grader, and so I didn't sit in the session with him. I didn't want to embarrass him. But thank you to all the administrators and staff and faculty and administrators that helped put that conference together. Very well done.
Thank you. Ms. Amen?
There we go. Thank you. Just a short comment. Just want to say I hope everybody stays safe and warm, tunes in for their asynchronous learning, and then can maybe enjoy a bit of time in the snow tomorrow.
Dr. Best?
Yes, just one shout-out to the Mrs. Amen, I'm sorry, Mrs. Alger and Mrs. Searl's Law and myself. We had an opportunity to attend the Artistic Versus Awards, which was held last Saturday at Christopher Newport University. And the way that I describe it is OMG. It was absolutely amazing. So a special shout-out to all of our student participants, the parents, and a special shout-out to all of the staff that supports that amazing program. And thank you to our guest artist that keeps inspiring our students as well. But it was an amazing event, and again, thank you.
Thank you so much. And my comment is a big thank you to Mrs. Moore Buffalo. She keeps us going. I know I'm your biggest problem child. But you really are a support for us to do the hard work, and we do really, really appreciate you. I lobbied the superintendent that we get a full snow day tomorrow, but we will be doing a little bit of studying. Do get out and enjoy the snow. I think we are in for a treat. Meeting adjourned.